Trustees make their way back to their respective chairs. The time, so it is 6:30. I am going to call the meeting to order and do a rule call. Borninsky.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Supervisor Graham Hudek is not currently in attendance, and reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance and currently speaking. Slavens.
Good evening.
Anne Snyderman.
I am here.
At this motion, at this point, I would like to call for a motion to appoint Diane Slavens, our Treasurer, the temporary president pro tem for this meeting only if someone would enjoy making that motion.
So moved?
Support.
It has been moved by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Foster, to make Treasurer Slavens the temporary president pro tem for this meeting only. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. I give the floor to you, Madam Treasurer.
Okay, good evening, and we are going to, I'm going to ask for motion to go into closed session.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation and settlement strategy for the case of Outdoor 1 v. Canton Township.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor?
May we do a rule?
A roll call?
Sure. I'm not sure if two-thirds roll call vote is required? Okay. All right. Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Have it. We will be going into closed session at 6:30.
Madam Chair, I motion that the board return from closed session.
Support. Motion from Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now may I have a, will Stanford pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Supervisor, or sorry, Madam Chair, I move that the board adopt the agenda adding items, the two additional add-on items, G6, consider offer to purchase property under Wayne County tax foreclosure, and item G7, consider approval of a paid parental leave policy. Support.
Made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have approval of the minutes of June 27?
So moved.
Support.
Made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have public comment for agenda items only. This is for agenda items only. Do we have any public comments? Is there any? Public comments for agenda items only. For agenda. Sir, right now, sir, right now, we are, we are in a meeting. If anybody has any public comments about what the, what is on the agenda tonight, you may come up to the podium. After, we will have public comments at the end of the meeting, but right now, we want to do business, so thank you very much. Is there any public comment on agenda items only? Is there any online? Any online? There's the agenda in the back.
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. So we will move on. Okay, so may I have a motion for the consent calendar?
How did you forget that?
Oh, I can't remember.
I'll move that.
You're not here to remind yourself.
I'll move that we pay the bills.
May I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion to pay the bills by Trustee Snyderman and supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And now we are going to go to the consent calendar. May I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I motion that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1, consider approval of a purchase order increase for the softballs at Canton Sports Center. C2, consider award of a contract to VinCon Incorporated for the demolition of 50525 Cherry Hill Road. Item C3, consider increasing blanket purchase order for municipal services. Item C4, consider approving the purchase of 13 vehicles for the police department with an associated amendment to the 2023 police budget. C5, consider approval of SolarWinds software contract renewal for annual maintenance and technical support.
Support. Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All right, now we will move to the, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, let's go to G1. May I have a motion for G1?
Madam Chair, for item G1, consider first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2 for the Lots Road Sewer District. I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an amendment to Chapter 74, Utilities, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, entitled Rates and Charges, and to schedule a second reading for July 25, 2023, and also draw attention to the fact that I believe the language in the executive summary has, in the background, has been amended to reflect current facts and circumstances.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Foster. There's an approximately 148 acres underneath the area south of Ford Road along Lots Road that does not have access to the sanitary sewer. Let's see, due to the Willow Creek, due to Willow Creek, this area requires a sewer pump station to allow sewer service. Most of the area is currently master planned as high to medium density and mixed use. Biltmore, the developer of the proposed 38-acre apartment complex south of Willow Creek, is prepared, preparing a detailed engineering plan and asked the township if they could financially assist with the pump station construction they made. They made this request in the interest of not bearing the entire estimate of $1,100,000 cost. The sanitary facility will be turned over to the township as public asset and will ultimately serve the larger district. Does Director Smith have any, anything to say regarding this?
Yes, if I could. The second part of the executive summary actually gets to the meat of why we're here before you tonight. This was actually adopted in 2022, and we did it, we changed the ordinance. Part of that ordinance specified how this would be, the fees would be collected in the future, and every time a new development would come in that district, we'd have to come back before the board and actually amend that ordinance. So really what this is about is changing that requirement from being an ordinance to doing it by resolution and setting the same fee. Everything else is exactly the same. The updated version you have in front of you in regards to the background information, we had some estimates as far as how much the one developer would be, or what the township's exposure would be as far as reimbursement, but it actually hasn't been bid out yet in order to know the true cost. So that will be coming before you in the future in regards to a pump station agreement with the developer. So it shouldn't have been included in this, but it's really just changing it from an ordinance to allowing us to amend that to a resolution in the future, or do it by resolution. So, thank you.
Any questions? Kate?
Just a clarification. The second reading would be scheduled for August 8, right? Not, not July 25?
Well, you know, if we have a.
The next regularly scheduled meeting?
Regularly scheduled. So if we don't have a meeting on the 22nd, it will be on the 8th. It's on the next meeting.
Okay, so it'll be at our next regularly scheduled board meeting? Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right. Moving on to G2. Okay, G2, consider approval of a purchase order to Partners in Architecture PLC for the architectural design, bid documents, engineering, and owner's reputation for the historic Henry Ford factory.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of architectural design, engineering, bid documents, and owner's representation for the historic factory building renovations in an amount not to exceed $106,000 to Partners in Architecture PLC at 65 Market Street, Suite 200, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043, to be paid from the subject account number for professional and contractual services professional. Support.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. In March of 2023, Canton Township entered an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County to receive $4,750,000 in American.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I, if I could, I would like to rescind my motion as I am a representative on the Partnership for the Arts Board, and I should not have made that motion. That is out of order.
Okay.
I would like prior to offer a motion to recuse myself from this item, from voting on this item, if I can.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All right, does somebody else want to?
So we need to vote on that.
Then vote on that motion, and then I'll leave, and somebody else can make the motion. I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I can read the motion if you'd like. I move to approve the award for architectural design, engineering, bid documents, and owner representation for the historic factory building renovations in an amount not to exceed $106,000 to Partners in Architecture, Market Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan, to be paid from the listed account, professional and contractual services professional.
Support. Motion made by Trustee Snyderman and supported by Trustee Borninsky. In March of 2023, Canton Township entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County to receive $4,750,000 in the ARPA funds to be used towards the Canton Town Square at Cherry Hill Village. The Town Square project will invest in some of the community's most treasured assets, including the Village Square Park, Historic Henry Ford Factory Building, the Factory Park, Cherry Hill School, Preservation Park, trails, public parking improvement, way findings, and programming in the Town Square. For the first project, the Town Square Project, Canton Township conducted an open request for proposal process and is recommending partnerships or Partners in Architecture PLC, the PIA, to provide service for engineering bid documents and owner representation for the remodel of the historic Henry Ford factory located at 50625 Cherry Hill Road, Canton, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $106,000. And I see we have some folks here. Jeanette, if you wanted to.
Yeah, we have Janelle Alatello from our Community Development Department here, as well as Mike Malone from Partners in Architecture.
Thank you, Deputy Supervisor, and thank you to the board for having us here tonight. We're in an exciting time where Cherry Hill Village is getting some future development to kind of launch the next phase of that area, and we have a, currently have an agreement with the Partnership for the Arts to utilize some of that space to develop the factory building that's located on this, the southwest corner of Cherry Hill and Ridge Road. And within that space, our goal is to provide some community recreation resources to that area by having a community space that we can offer programming, whether that be for our therapeutic recreation, our youth and teens, and also to have space available for other community events and programs for the greater Canton area, as well as the residents that live down in the Cherry Hill Village. Currently, we don't have a recreation building in that area, and this will be a great launching point for that part of the community to have a space that they can gather that's public access and public recreation. So with me tonight is Michael Malone. As indicated earlier, we went through the process of bidding out the architectural and engineering, as well as the owner's representation on the project, and we had five qualified bidders on the project, and those were scored by a committee within the township. And the top two companies were then interviewed, and in both situations, Partners in Architecture scored the highest out of both of those situations. And so we're asking the board to consider awarding them the architectural engineering and the owner's representation, so we can keep moving forward on that project and hopefully bring that to fruition within the next year.
Any board comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I really like that we are following the scoring process, and this time we went above and beyond and did an interview. And yes, we have worked with Partners in Architecture before with our other projects, so I'm very excited as to what they bring to us in the coming months.
Summer?
Jeanette, two nights, two nights in a row.
It's worth it, though. This is great stuff happening in Canton.
I just want to say again, you know, as I said last night after our planning commission meeting, I'm just really excited that we're bringing these projects to fruition, and this is the first step in the Canton Township Town Square project, and so I'm very excited that we're making this happen, and this is a great first step, so I'm happy to support it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations, yes.
I made the motion. And Kate, supported.
All right. Well, thank you. And now, G3, consider request to extend service agreement for architecture, architecture and engineering. I'm sorry. Are you having a heart to your? G3. G3, we are, consider request to extend service agreement for architecture and engineering. Okay?
Madam, is this an extension of the exact same project, or? This is a general?
This is separate, this is a separate agreement and a separate project.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize a three-year service agreement with automatic one-year contract extensions with A3C Collaborative Architecture at 11510 East Liberty Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48104.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Foster. To provide quality service, Canton Township maintains numerous service agreements in order to expedite routine work. Canton Township has mutually beneficial, is beneficial partnership with both AC3 Collaborative and Partnership in Architecture LLC over the years. Therefore, we're recommending a three-year service agreement with both companies with automatic one-year contract extension, provided the vendor is not breached of the contract. Okay. Is there any questions? Deputy Supervisor?
Again, no, I have nothing to add, but again, we do have Jeanette Alatello from Community Development here, as well as Mike Malone from Partners in Architecture. Should the board have any questions about the service agreement?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple words on the purpose of this.
So, we had, in 2019, went out to forbid first, architecture and engineering services to have several firms on hand that we could reach out to when we needed different projects taken care of as far as, for different parks or different facilities, and both leisure services and municipal services have used those over the years, and we have a great working relationship with both A3C and with Partners in Architecture, and we do continue to follow the finance policy as far as when items are over $10,000, they'll still come before the board, and for larger projects, we will continue to bid those out. This just allows us the opportunity that when we need some designs done for whether that be grants or other current, more immediate needs, then we can reach out to these firms. We'll continue to get quotes on projects and bid out projects that are larger.
Thank you.
Questions?
I would just like to add real quickly, I don't, I don't, first of all, I don't think there was a second on the motion, so there may need to be a second to support.
Trustee Foster?
Oh, there was, okay. And secondly, I think maybe to contextualize this a little bit, our Municipal Services Department maintains a number of contracts like this because they're typically the department that is, you know, doing a lot of projects in the townships, whether that's in facilities or construction projects or roads projects. You know, since the board has really began emphasizing parks projects and community development projects, there's more of a need within the Community Development and Leisure Services Department to have these kinds of contracts in place, so I just wanted to kind of give that context to the board first.
Okay, thank you. No. We're in, we're doing business right now, thank you. We have a motion on the table. Do I hear ayes?
Calling, calling for the vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement with Partners in Architecture LLC will be formally executed following board approval.
All right.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So we are moving on to G4. All right. Consider waiving the bidding process and purchaser of office furniture with an associated amendment to the 2023 fire budget.
Madam Chair, I move to approve waiving the bidding process, purchasing office furniture in the amount of $22,961.62 from Kentwood Office Furniture, and to approve the attached budget amendment from the 2023 fire budget.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninsky. The Fire Department is requested, requesting to purchase office furniture for the fire administration in the amount of $22,961.62. The department is also requesting to waive the bidding process and furniture purchase of this furniture for, from Kentwood, to stay consistent with the current furnishing in the new renovation. The department is also requesting an amendment to the 2023 fire budget for this purchase. Director Stockline, do you have any, any comments or any?
Just that our renovation's coming along, we're coming to the end of it, and, you know, with the addition of the Business Operations Coordinator, we didn't plan on having that furniture, so this is part of that, and then really realizing how beat up the deputy chief's furniture is, replacing it all at the same time, and moving forward, so we're close, though. It's getting there.
Okay, great. All right. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in, oh, I'm sorry, Kate.
So the idea here is to match some furniture that we already have, right?
That's correct. We had a, you know, a contract with Kentwood prior to that. I think it expired this past year, so all of the other furniture was purchased through them, and this will match that furniture, and I know that the police will have one coming forward with some of the furniture for their side as well.
Okay, yeah, and I see that there's chairs that will match a table that we already have, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to G5. Sir, you will have time, right now, we are, we're conducting business. G5. Consider the approval of purchase order for Dominion Voting System for the maintenance of voting equipment prior to 2024.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the purchasing policy and approve the annual warranty service agreement costs of $29,560, and authorize a purchase order to Dominion Voting Systems for $29,560, as the township is obligated to fulfill those state and local contracts, and this is a sole source provider under Michigan election law.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Foster. The Clerk's Office is requesting the Township Board to approve a purchase order to Dominion Voting System for the maintenance costs associated with a state-approved contract, as a negotiated five-year period without this cost has elapsed. The cost is $29,560. The cost will continue annually until it, until a new system is approved and acquired. The Clerk's Office purchased two ICC systems directly from Canon, which allows the township to receive $5,000 in annual savings. Clerk Segrist, do you have anything you want to say or talk about?
So just for context, the reason we're raving the bidding process on this is, under Michigan election law, the county clerk is the one authorized to determine which vendor we go with. All, there are three vendors in the state of Michigan. All three of them are certified by the Bureau of Elections. They all use equipment that is certified by the U.S. Election Assistance Commission that is tested in laboratories, but Dominion was granted the contract in Wayne County. We received Help America Vote Act funds that covered the cost of all of the equipment in 2017. I believe it was to the tune of just over a quarter of a million dollars' worth of election equipment that we received, and when the state negotiated those prices with Dominion, the Department of Technology Management and Budget, they built in a five-year grace period over the cost of the maintenance agreement on that equipment. That was implemented in 2017. We are now currently at the sixth year of having that equipment since it's been instituted. We are outside of that five-year grace period, and so this expense, $29,560, will be an ongoing annual expense. We worked with finance to ensure that it was included in the budget. My intention next year is to have a rolling PO brought to the board in January so that we can cover the costs in our first meeting for that year and not have to bring forward future RBAs. It is budgeted, we are obligated to do it, it is not a discretionary decision, but I would appreciate your support tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there any board comments or questions? Steven?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clerk Segrist, how, from your experience, how long do we keep this equipment and you, and keep it in use before we replace it?
Typically, most jurisdictions in Michigan do not pay out of pocket to replace election equipment, primarily because of the, the cost, additionally because most communities don't prioritize, I think, spending on election equipment to that extent, right?
I see.
So, the only scenario or the only comparative we have would be the M100 systems from ESNS that we obtained in 2002, and we had until 2017. Those, 15 years is a long time for tabulation equipment. Anybody who had volunteered on the elections during that period of time would use the M100 as a swear word. It was a very challenging process, and the error rate went up high on them. They were also analog scanners, these are digital scanners, so the technology is far more advanced, it's more accurate. I, I mean, industry sta, I mean, they've, they have already started issuing a second version of the equipment that we currently have. We did upgrade our EMS system, if, from, you know, that should ring a bell from previous meetings. We did buy a new EMS system, but that was under the, the $10,000, so we did pay for that out of a direct PO with, with Dominion. I, I would imagine when the 10-year contract has expired with Dominion, we would be looking at, at renewing that. We would either get new equipment from Dominion, or we would hope that the state might do another refresh, see what else is out there, invite other companies to bid.
So this would be annual cost for about another five years?
Five years.
And then maybe we'd be replacing it and get another similar. And then maybe we'd be replacing it and get another similar agreement where it would be waived for perhaps a number of years after that?
Yeah. Yes, the state and the county have obligated us to five years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go on to G6. Consider, consider offer to purchase property under Wayne County tax foreclosure.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the offer to purchase the following parcels of land under Wayne County tax foreclosure at the minimum bid amount listed. Subject parcel number one with a subject tax parcel ID ending in 709 for an amount of $3,219.06, and then parcel number two with a subject tax ID number ending in 704 for an amount of $20,118.80, and authorize municipal services director to make the written offer on behalf of the township board and the, and the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. On July 5th, 2023, we received the annual letter from Wayne County Treasurer identifying parcels that were recently foreclosed upon by the county due to unpaid 2020 and prior year delinquent taxes. As a community, as a community where these parcels are located, Canton has a first right of refusal to purchase the property for public purpose should the state not exercise its option. We're interested in two of the parcels on the list with the bid price of $23,337.86. The request to purchase must be filed with Wayne County no later than July 21st, 2023, and payment must be made by July 28th, 2023. Director Smith, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that I appreciate the board acting quickly on this. You can see the timeline is very short. We don't get much notification from the county before we have to take action. So I just appreciate all the back and forth on Friday to make sure that we could get this added on this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any board questions?
No, some are good.
I was just going to say that I appreciate thinking through how we can acquire property in the north side of the township, because, you know, we hear from residents all the time that we need more amenities on the north side, so I just appreciate the work to get this done.
All right, so I was just going to, similar to Trustee Foster, being on the trails and sidewalks committee, having just gone through a committee meeting, it's great to take action that can lead to us expanding our trails and sidewalks in our community.
Yeah, I agree with both Trustee Foster and Trustee Snyderman. Furthermore, I'm excited that we are taking this step because this is, you know, totally aligned with our board goals. It's always good to see those going forward.
Right, those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go on to G7. Consider approval of paid parental leave policy.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve the paid parental leave policy.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The purpose of this policy is to provide employees who are new parents with additional flexibility, time to bond with their child, allow adjustments for their new family situation, and balance their personal obligations. This policy grant time away from work with pay for the birth of the employee's child or the adoption of a child. This policy will run concurrently with the township's family medical leave policy, FMLA, as applicable. All right. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything you want to add? I know you've been working hard on this.
Yeah, just that Supervisor's Office was approached by the clerk maybe four or five months ago with an idea to, to provide paid parental leave to employees in Canton Township. As I'm sure you're all aware, family and medical leave can be granted under the Family and Medical Leave Act, but it's unpaid leave after, after the birth of a child for typically up to three months with certain other qualifying factors in the statute. There are a number of municipalities that are beginning to adopt some kind of paid parental leave policy. And so we worked internally with our finance department and with all of our department heads to come up with a policy that everyone in the township felt comfortable with and that kept township employees really at, at the top of mind. And this is, this is the policy that we've developed, so I'm happy to answer any, any questions about it.
Comments or questions?
I'm just very proud and happy to see this, thanks to everyone who worked on it. As a mother, I know what it's like to bring a baby home and need some time to adjust to all of that, so I really appreciate this.
Yeah, I am, I'm really happy that we are implementing this policy because, you know, it's not just for mothers, it's also for parents. You know, we always, with new families and with even some families that are considering adoption, I think this is a great policy that we are being very inclusive in this, and I am very happy that we are implementing this for our employees.
I couldn't agree more with Trustee Borninski and Trustee Ganguly. It's unthinkable that in 2023, an organization would not have paid parental leave, so I guess it's about time. But I'm happy to see this come to fruition. And I love the intention in some of the specific policies, like the fact that it is a gender-neutral policy and it can be taken by any parent, and that you have up to a year after the child is born to take the policy. That way, parents can stagger time off, and I think that that is really important. So definitely appreciate the intention and happy to support this.
Yeah, I totally support this. Having had this in the corporate world for at least 30 years now, I think it's great that municipalities are, are catching up with the rest of the world. And I think that in the competitive marketplace that we have today for employees, it's very important that we are able to do this. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Supervisor's Office, Human Resources, Finance, especially Police and Fire for giving a lot of input on this from a, how this might impact the staffing issues that they currently have. It was really great to see everyone kind of come together on something like this. I know from an organizational standpoint, having spent essentially seven years watching us hire, recruit, train predominantly women applicants, invest in them, and then see them leave the field because of, because of a pregnancy, because of the need to bond with the child, the insecurity around that, I think we were leaving some money on the table. I think we were, it was costing the organization from a strategic standpoint. So I'm super grateful for what this will do to help create some more security for young mothers in that regard. Additionally, having no, no leave for, for fathers, I know that for, for a number of years, that was not, it wasn't accepted, it's not accepted for, for men to be overly involved and to take time from work. But what we find, and what has been found, is that that bond is just as important between a father and a child. And so the fact that we are stating that our values are, both of those things are, are amazing. And then additionally, offering that leave for individuals who are looking at adopting, you know, the evidence is clear, children that lack that physical connection, they carry that with them for the rest of their life, and it, and it plays severe roles in their ability to ever, to feel secure. And so as an employer, I think it's the right thing to do. I also think it's the strategic thing to do. So I'm super grateful that we, as an organization, we're open and willing to do that, and, and we're getting it done. I know a number of employees that will be grateful as well.
And I'm, ditto to everything you guys have said, I truly agree. I know when I had my children, back in the day, I was given six weeks off and my husband had no time. So this is really important for families, to be able to bond with their children, whether they stagger it or what. So I really think, thank you guys for all the hard work that all, all of the directors did. And I know it's going to help our township employees quite a bit, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, that is it. Now we'll move into public comment. Okay, so, all right, and we will give you three, each person will get three minutes.
Hello to the judge for me, will you?
I, so, thank you.
John Anthony from Canton, Michigan. Congratulations on all of you for serving, having been on the boards. Unfortunately, I sat next to Steve and my ear is still ringing.
He never sat next to me.
Not as bad as Mike's. Mike is, Mike is very verbose. Ask him what two and two is, he'll give you the algebraic equation. I'm here tonight to speak about the American flag, and I gave each one of you a small but very important flag. I don't know if any of you know a fellow by the name of John H. Turbett, T-U-R-B-E-T-T. I said John, excuse me, Jacob. He graduated from Canton High School back in June of '06, and he joined the United States Marine Corps in January of '07. Following his recruitment training, he was assigned to the 2nd Marine Division at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. And ultimately, his engineer, combat engineer battalion was assigned to, to a, a, a position in Afghanistan, part of a engineer combat platoon, which meant they went out and found mines and found bad people. Unfortunately, on February 13th of 2010, he was killed in action. Jacob gave his life so that all of us could enjoy the benefits of this great country. While Canton Township has set aside an entire month of June, 720 hours to honor the LGBTQ community, less than 1% of the population, I might add, Jacob, he gets one day, he gets 24 hours. I think Canton Township could do a little bit better. I, as I said earlier, I passed out to you a little American flag, which represents all of us in the United States of America. While the LGBTQ flag is prominently displayed in the Canton Township Treasurer's Office, there's no American flag displayed in the front lobby of this building. We have to come into the boardroom and either to see the American flag. Other communities take a different attitude. They're proud of their American flag, they're proud of this country, and that American flag is prominently displayed when people walk into those municipal offices. I would respectfully request that the United States of American flag, symbol of all of us, and what Jacob and other military personnel died for, be permanently displayed in the lobby of this building so that all residents who enter this building for business or pleasure can see what this flag stands for. It doesn't stand for any particular group, or any particular philosophy, or any political party. It stands for all of us. And I think it's, needs, this flag needs to be shown where it's displayed. Having served in the Marine Corps and having served on this board for a number of years, unfortunately, next to Mike, Steve, I think it's important, no kidding aside, I think it's important that that flag be displayed and be shown. There's a lot of personnel that I meet in the morning, having coffee, and at 83, you get a lot of, people still remember me, no tomatoes been thrown at me yet, but, and they've asked why. I don't have a good answer. Why not put that flag, it's here in the, in the boardroom for the board meetings once a month, why not put it in the lobby? If you need the money to put one up, I can get you a flag and get you one tomorrow. And I would encourage that that flag, the symbol of the United States of America and symbol of all of us, be displayed immediately in that lobby. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, John.
I would like to, if I can, just take immediate point of privilege, if I can. One, I respect John Anthony, and I've enjoyed serving on the township board with him. I did want to clarify that it is the clerk's office that has the LGBT flag, not the treasurer's office, so that is in, in my office, that is not in Diane's office.
No, that's wrong.
And it, it's over in the clerk, it's over in the clerk's office, and then on top of that, I would like to take, again, if I can, Matt, all due respect, but I did not interrupt anybody when they spoke. I did not interrupt anybody when they spoke, and I would appreciate the same amount of decorum.
Okay.
I would appreciate the same amount of decorum. I would also like to point out to the fact that there is currently an American flag in the lobby of the township building. Additionally, the clerk's office is the only administrative office on this side of the building that also has an American flag inside its office.
Okay. I was in the United States Marine Corps, and I went through what they call C-school, the patriotic flag, flag platoon, and there's only, it's called GCC, God, Country and Community. In the Marine Corps, they call it God, Country and Corps. Okay, the rest are all penance. If that man is so proud about his rainbow flag, just tell him, take the flag down, because if you can do that, I want to get a job in here, because I'm from the South and I want to fly that Alabama flag, or maybe the Confederate flag, or if I'm German, how about the Nazi flag? That stuff is offensive to the people, and you, you see how it's dividing the people in Canton. Get that damn flag down. If he's so proud of whoever it is that's displaying it, tell him to get a shirt and put the shirt on. That's you? Put it on, I'm, I'm gay. Run around, tell with that. But stop this stuff dividing this, the community and the state and the country. Get that damn flag down. You've got a whole month devoted to the race, you got a month devoted to the people who, where they picked for their pride for, because they're gay, but there's not one day set aside for the people that are straight, right? Because you seem like the talk all the time, you got a comment on that? You, the one who talks all the time. I'm offended by that flag.
Well, listen to you, sir, and then...
Okay, that flag is, is dividing us, yes or no? You got people in here telling you, take it down. If you're so proud about being gay, wear a shirt, tell them I'm gay. How many of you people support that flag? Any of you? There you go, but I guess you all do. You're dividing Canton Township. And I guess the only way to, to show you how it's going to happen, we'll put, we'll take you people out. We will get you elected out of your office. You, we're going to speak up and eliminate you people out of this office. You're not taking us in the right direction. You talk about building the future of Canton, look how dirty Canton is getting. You got, you're taking down trees that are alive, but letting all those damn dead trees lay on this Ford Road. You talk about cleaning up Canton, go look at your car wash, how filthy the garbage is behind it. You don't do nothing, but you got four ordinance officers, they're supposed to be doing something. I don't, I'm looking at my tax dollar, where is it working at? What are you accomplishing? When you have board meetings, you won't let people oppose you. You got that thing about the Dominion, the Dominion vote machine? Don't you realize all the trouble they caused in the last election, and you want to bring it into Canton? You guys ought to be recalled, every one of you. You shame, you that shame Canton, smile all you want, but you shame Canton.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Any other comments? Yes, please, podium, three minutes.
I think John Anthony and John Paquette have taken care of the flag business.
Can you move the microphone towards you?
Pardon?
The microphone. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. John Paquette and John Anthony have taken care of the flag problem, okay? As far as I'm concerned. You've heard, you've heard enough of it. Okay. Now, what I want to do is on number five... to do is on number five, that you, what it says right here, "Consider approval of a purchase order." That means you're spending money, right? An answer? Do I get an answer?
This is public comment right now, sir.
Well, the public comment, the public is asking the board up here, number five says that you are considering an approval of a purchase order for the Dominion machines, right? That means you're spending money, does it not? I mean, I've been in business a long time, and when someone issues a purchase order, they're buying something. Okay? Do I get an answer? Yes or no?
Sir, this is, we don't deliberate. So we're listening to you, and when you're done...
But then, what good is the meeting?
This is public comment.
I want number five scratched, what you did. You approved it. You approved it with no comment from the public, nothing. You sit up there and you say, "Oh, we approve it. We approve it." No, no. Why can't I get a hold of this? A piece of paper typed like this mailed to my house at the beginning of the month would be a lot cheaper for you guys on what you're going to talk about. Because, I'll tell you right now, you've got, what, forty, forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight, I think it's the last count, of registered voters in Canton, okay? Now, I know, I know that 90% of those voters in Canton, those voters in Canton don't, this Dominion voting machine people are not good. They're the ones that caused all the problems in this last election. And you're over here approving money on an annual basis to these people, and the public doesn't know anything about it. That's what, that's my comment. That's my comment on what's going on here. Now, why can't I get one of these?
Okay, your three minutes is up. Thank you, sir. Do we have any more public comments?
So now I'm, now I'm dismissed, right?
I would just briefly like to take a point of order, which is what I do specifically when factually inaccurate statements were made. First and foremost, we did author public comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Secondly, the agenda is in the back of the room. Thirdly, the agenda is publicly available in the clerk's office and on the township website prior to the meeting.
And, and those will be stated at the end when we all speak.
So I take, I typically will ask for a point of privilege when a statement is made that is factually incorrect at public comment. Not something I take issue with philosophically, but when something is factually incorrect, I like to correct the record immediately as a point of privilege.
I'm Kathleen Chaffin, and I do want to address the flag, the LGBTQ flag. If you're going to have that flag up, I want my flag up. Heterosexual, there's a hundred of them. Go on your, look under heterosexual flags, and you'll find them. So, to be fair. Or none of them go up, you leave that one. But you can't have that one by itself. If you're going to have 1% of this country up there, I want the rest of us next to it, side by side. Okay. Now, that's, that's kind of that. The GFL, the trash pickup, we get ours on Tuesday, and it's Tuesday and Saturday. They didn't come Saturday, they came Sunday. Was there a problem that you know of? Our trash sat there, the yard waste sat there until Sunday. So maybe somebody can check in with that. Is that going to be just, it's going to be for the rest of the year, right, for the yard work to be picked up on Saturday? Is that correct? That's fine. Just wondering why it didn't get picked up on Saturday. You might want to shake your finger at them. But that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Any other public comments?
George raises your mic.
Okay. Mr. Miller? Mm-hmm. Your turn.
George Miller, things in the past. Mr. Slavin, you were here a week or two ago, and you were complaining water shortage. We spent big money on Joy Road for a pumping station. So if I'm watering my lawn at 6 o'clock or 9 o'clock, you buy at a discount rate, and that was made so we could get more water. So why are you up here crying for a water shortage, for one thing? Now, let's move on about this lift on the truck going over to Washtenaw County. On that, that's 15,000, it's already over there. From 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that could go over to San Joe's or U of M to help. You talk a big talk on senior citizens, but it's $100 coming and $100 going if you have to have a lift. We've experienced that with my parents. Okay, now, so that you can, you can possibly do that, and there's always an insurance problem. Well, some of your employees have hit me, and guess what? There's a pool with five or six municipalities, and you are insured by yourself, basically. So it's your call to get the insurance if you want to. So that should be settled. Now, let's go to the fire plug. The ditch is being cleaned out, and I noticed the other day, the fire department couldn't even get in on Palmer Road to a fire plug, and we've been asking for that to be mowed and so forth from the county. Now, let's go over here to the copper roof on the summit. I was at a meeting over here, it's about, you want 10, 15,000 dollars, a million, not thousands, millions of dollars to revamp it. You put a copper roof on, I complained about that. There's 75 years on its tin roof that these people put on Myers Stores and their gas stations. I suppose, did you look into that before you bought the copper roof? Now, let's go on to a couple other things. You have a mower machine that you had, $12,000 years ago. The county's out here mowing the ditches evidently. What happened to the 20, with the $12,000 mower machine? Is it sitting over in the yard rusting away? I don't know why it's not being used possibly when the county doesn't pick up the slack. Now, the guard rail over at Palmer Road and Shoveling Road, it's leaning at a 45-degree angle in the ditch. It doesn't do any good from anybody going in the six-foot ditch. So that takes care of that. Now, I want to know why, at last time, when we were there, over there at the summit, these guys, whether they talked five minutes, three minutes, or two minutes, were always on a timer for three minutes. Right off the bat, supervisor says to the politician, and you were there, Michael, says you got five minutes. So where's everybody's five minutes out here? Why are we being limited? Just because you just don't want to hear it? The complaints? I don't have any more to say.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Everybody should be allowed to talk as long as it might seek response. Can we be here for a week?
All right. You know, this is, I expect, I expect, we are being very respectful. This is a board meeting, and I expect, I expect respect.
Which you guys are doing.
Sir...
Sir, you're out of order.
Sir, I will ask the chief to walk you out if you cannot conduct yourself.
Whether you respect us or the people who voted for us, we were elected. You should respect that, just the same way we respected the previous supervisor. Have some semblance of decorum and self-respect for yourself. You're at a public meeting. You've been talking this entire time, and it's disrespectful.
Do we have any comments from our directors at all? Any comments? No? How about the board? Any board members have comments? Okay, please. Trustee Foster.
So, I was out of town last weekend, but I saw a lot of amazing pictures of a lot of really engaged community members at Canton Proud, Pride Outside. And I'm so proud of this team and our leisure services team for putting on that event to be what we call a welcoming community. And we wouldn't have gotten here without the work of a lot of people. And so I just want to take a step backward and go down memory lane. In 2014, we passed a fully inclusive nondiscrimination ordinance that includes the LGBTQ community. At that time, that was championed by trustee Steven Steineman, and it passed with a vote of six to one. And thankfully, trustee John Anthony voted for it. In 2019, we passed a resolution recognizing Pride Month in Canton Township, and trustee John Anthony voted for it. In 2021, we passed it again, and this entire board unanimously passed it. And so it's taken us a while to get here, and we have a welcoming community, and I'm so proud to be a representative of it. But I'm not going to sit here and let you disparage a community that has been under attack in this country for the last 50 years. Not today, not in Canton Township, not while I sit in this chair. And that can cost me my seat, and I promise you, I don't care. But y'all can stay mad about it.
Any other board comment?
If I may?
Yes.
Hey, I would also like to say, since it was the clerk's office that decided to put the inclusive pride flag up, and we chose to do that two years ago, that was done primarily to signal to members of the community that the clerk's office is a welcoming place for them. We deal with voting. We deal with individuals who are getting ballots, who are presenting ID, whose gender may be different on the ID than the one that they are presenting. And they don't know what kind of a reaction they're going to get when they show up. They don't know what they're going to get from the person in front of them. They don't know if they're going to get judged, or if it's going to be weird, or if they're going to get mocked. They don't know if this is an inclusive place. And we're signaling to them that this is an inclusive place. That flag is not about celebrating anything. It's not about pride at all. It can be, if that's what people want, but it's signaling individuals about the service they can expect from their office. And I would, I want to apologize to the members of the Canton LGBT community who have to hear that. I want to apologize to the 80,000 active-duty men and women serving in the military who are members of the LGBT community, which is 6.7% of our armed services, and the over 1 million LGBTQ veterans in this country. And I do not like false comparisons that somehow the pride flag is the opposite of the American flag, because it is not. It is not the opposite of the American flag. Not only that, we have had the American flag in the clerk's office for seven years, longer than that. We have the American flag in the lobby. You all passed it on your way inside. We have the American flag right there, and we have the American flag hanging from the flagpole outside of us. Short of me wrapping myself in the American flag, I don't know what to do to combat anti-LGBTQ bigotry. I can't do it. But I'm not taking the flag down, because it's sending a message to the people that this is their community and it's their building. Clearly, the people who spoke today have no problem feeling like this is their building. And that's right. You pay taxes. It is your building. It's theirs, too. It's theirs, too. And they get treated poorly. And I'm going to stand up for them. It doesn't have anything to do with me being gay or not, me being married to a woman or not. And the fact that individuals who spoke at public comment today made disparaging slurs at my staff weeks ago is disrespectful. It's pathetic. It's not okay. Calling Canton Queer City, USA, to people whose only job is that they're working the front counter of the township and have to listen to that filth is inappropriate. It's not right, and it's abusive. Where's the common decency? If we want to talk about traditional values, let's go back to common decency and how we talk to people. Thank you.
Any other board comments? I'll go with Tanya. Now, we're past public comments. You can write a letter or send us an email. Trustee Ganguly?
Yeah. So I heard everything today that everyone had to say in the public comments. And we, as a board, we believe that everyone belongs here. Our, our goal is to make everyone feel that we belong here. And it is very, very hurtful to people in the community saying that we, we are being discouraged to being inclusive, to be, to include everyone in the community. Seventy years ago, I would not probably have been voted to be on this, on this board, because I am an immigrant, and I feel that we are, we are doing the same with the LGBTQ community. We, we belong here. Everyone belongs in Canton, and we encourage people to be inclusive. And it was very disparaging the way some of the community members said, had some begat comments about the LGBTQ community today. And I, I, we as a board are very proud to say that we want everyone to be included. And the flag, our American flag, we, 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 we respect the American flag. We have the American flag in the lobby. But we also want everyone that comes into this township to feel included. That is the goal of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Borninski?
So I'd like to address some of the issues we're having tonight with civility. We sat here and listened to you, because it's important to us to hear from you. But while we were having our meeting, there was a lot of noise coming from the audience that was distracting and also made us hard to, it made it difficult for us to hear each other and to hear what was going on up here at the board table. And it's important for us to be able to conduct our business, because without us doing our business, the township doesn't run. That being said, I'm also pretty disappointed in what I heard tonight, and disappointed is probably a pretty gentle word for how I'm feeling. Not only did we hear comments about the pride flag or the LGBTQ flag, we heard comments about the dam flag. We heard comments about a month being devoted to race, things that I think are pretty deplorable. It's 2023. Everyone's welcome here. And frankly, I'm, I'm very disappointed in the behavior that I witnessed tonight. I, I, I just don't even know what to say at this point, because it was, I guess, pretty eye-opening for me. You don't have to agree with us, but I think that we should be able to conduct a meeting where everyone is treated respectfully and everyone is listened to. And when we're being interrupted when we're conducting business, that's not respectful.
I would like to address, I think, was it Kathleen? Kathleen, just to let you know that the, all the garbage pickup was, that was after Tuesday, was delayed this week. So that included the, the yard waste. So the yard waste was delayed, and, and so it came, they came to pick up on Sunday.
So, so I support my fellow board members in their statements. I would just like to add the following. It is not equivalent, and I think Clerk Seigras mentioned false equivalency, it's not equivalent to say that groups that have been discriminated against for decades, for centuries, is the same as not, as having a flag up and not liking it. That is not the same thing. So you have the right to not like it, but we are showing support. It doesn't mean that we don't support everyone in our community. These groups have been discriminated against for centuries, not just the LGBTQ community. With that said, we have something in this community for basically everyone. I can think of three different days that we honor our military and our veterans in this community, and we have events that do so. We also have events that support different ethnicities in our community, and we have events around the different holidays in our communities for all the holidays that people celebrate in our communities. We have, in the past, had proclamations celebrating our veterans, and we will continue to do so in the future. Trustee Anthony is a man I've served with and respect, and he also has voted to approve the same things that we are voting to approve these days in our community. We've had, we've had the American flags in our buildings ever since I've been here and before, and we will continue to do so. before and we will continue to do so. So, honestly, I can't agree with almost any words that were said tonight at public comment because I just feel that they came from a place of discrimination. And I approve, I support your ability to say them. I don't support your ability to speak over us when we are trying to respond to what you're saying. If you don't know how these meetings work, if you don't know how these meetings work, we can explain them to you. It is on you as a citizen to learn how these meetings work. It is by law that we publish on the outside of the building what the agenda's going to be. We also by law publish it on social media. So, you can find what is on the agenda on social media. And so, in the future, if you come, there's a time and place for you to talk. If you have to have a conversation amongst yourselves, please step outside. This is, no, you obviously don't know how these meetings work because you're asking to talk again and the time of public comment has ended. So...
I got the First Amendment. Now, y'all...
You obviously don't even know how the First Amendment works. So...
Or the Constitution, yes or no? Now, I'm going to talk. Go ahead, Mike. Laugh.
You obviously don't know how government works in this country. So, I assume you don't, I assume you don't want to get educated on how it works. Sir...
Remember the seventies, eighties and nineties?
You are out of order. You're out of order.
Chief, I ask you to remove the gentleman from, from the room.
Did you just talk about HIV with the LGBT community? Actually, let him speak. Clarify.
Thank you.
So, so I just wanted to finish what I was saying. People are welcome to come to these meetings and give their opinions and comments at the time of public comment by law and we will continue to respect that. And we will continue to support all people in this community and, and have events that support that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Snyderman. I'll just be very brief. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. I am very disappointed in the behavior of some of the participants in the audience. We are a welcoming community. We have always talked about being a welcoming community and that means for everybody, everybody in Canton Township. And we do have programs, multiple programs for everyone. The flag, like clerk Segras had said, is out in the lobby. It is outside as well as here, so we do display it. As for GFL Saturdays, they do pick up yard wastes. Sometimes we are delayed and if they're delayed, they do work on Sundays. As for the limited water use, when we were in a drought during the time where everything was very dry, we were asking people if they would to limit their water use and maybe use their water in the evening. Water pressure gets very low if everybody's watering at the same time. So, it was just a statement that we were asking people to do. It wasn't a mandate. And then, the agenda is always on the website. So, you can always look beforehand at our agenda. We do post it. And if you have any questions on how a meeting is run, please, you know, ask one of us, not during the meeting, but prior to, we're always available, even our emails. And seems like there was one other thing I was going to say. Just another comment that was made was they wanted to discuss something that was on the agenda afterwards. If you have a question about something on the agenda, you do it at the beginning of the meeting. We did ask, was there any, any comments regarding the, what was on the agenda and nobody did stand up? So, from now on, if a resident does have a question about what we're voting on that day, the time to ask the question is at the beginning of the meeting when you are asked. You could address the board. So, with that...
I would just like to add that our police chief went above and beyond tonight. He had a lot of work to do in terms of having, helping us handle, hold this meeting. So, I'd like to thank him for that.
Yeah.
And I just, I forgot and I should say something, but our vendor for elections, Dominion, was disparaged tonight and they did just settle an eight-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar lawsuit with Fox News for the distribution of false information about them. And so, I don't want to allow ourselves to be a vendor, a venue of propaganda. A number of statements were made tonight about Dominion that are not factually accurate. And I would just point to that settlement of eight-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, the second-largest settlement in history for defamation as the, as evidenced of that because the defense against defamation is proving that what you said is true. That's a pretty simple defense against a defamation claim. And clearly, that was not something that Fox News was willing to do. What I'm willing to do is to state clearly right now that the claims made tonight against Dominion were not factually accurate.
Appreciate that. And I think a lot of things that were made during public comment were not factually accurate. So, I'll put that on the record as well. Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
So moved.
Support. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, good job, everyone.